Rich, are you ready? All right, I will call to order the Town of Elon Town Council Work Session for July 25th, 2022. We will now go ahead with the Pledge of Allegiance. If all who are able will please stand.
I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands.
Clark, Diane, there are no items on the consent agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And next on the agenda are public comments. This is the opportunity for residents and visitors to speak about any non-agenda item up to three minutes. And if you would like to speak and share your wishes for the town, you just need to sign in. Did anybody sign in, Diane?
Our person signed in. No one wishing to speak.
Give it a moment in case anybody has changed their mind. Anyone online?
There are persons online but not wishing to speak.
We will close the public comment section. Next are ordinances and resolutions. Letter A, rezoning case 2022-02 for Park Northwest. I believe Lori are providing us with a presentation to start.
If I can get a presentation.
The second. We've been practicing this, so we should have it.
Okay.
You ready?
Okay. Intro pages. Okay, there we go. Thank you, Diane. Mayor, members of the board, at the July 12th of the town council meeting, there were some great discussion items that were brought up between the board members and the applicant. And as staff, I just wanted to highlight a couple of those discussion points. First one of the items was the parking setback. The parking setback that was brought up, I did reach out to the developer and his team and his landscaper, Tony, who's here this evening, did include an item in the email that I have included in your packet that stated that they would be willing to proffer a condition to the request that requires a minimum distance between the garage door and the right-of-way sidewalk for front-entry homes and the garage door and the alley pavement to be a minimum of 18 feet in depth for rear-loaded homes to allow for adequate parking. And this would be in compliance with our LDO. If this is something that the board would like to see, then this would be, need to be a condition that is added into their request. Connectivity to Cable Square Development to the north. There has some big discussion about removing the street connection or the pavement connection to Cable Square via Ralston Drive and possibly only providing pedestrian connectivity and a utility connection. Fire Chief Massey stated that he was comfortable closing the connection at Ralston Drive as long as the Old Town Drive remains open. He discussed this also with the Fire Marshal John Payne with Alman's County, and he was fine with that as well. So again, if this is something the board wants to consider, there is a current condition in there that I believe the developer added about keeping both connections open with two-speed pumps or tables. So that would be something that need to be modified if the board chose to apply that condition or consider that condition. Setbacks between residential buildings, as stated at the previous meeting, the developer revised the side yard setback for the larger lots, the lots that are larger than 50 feet in width, to go from a three-foot side yard setback to five feet, which would provide 10 feet in between the dwellings. Chief Massey, and I say Chief Massey, there was a memo included in your packet from him. He went on to elaborate that the setbacks between the buildings changed the building code to require fire-rated walls facing one another. And this would be in the remaining single-family that has a three-foot side yard setback. The developer has stated that they plan on using brick, stone, and fiber cement board, which helps to reduce the fire spread. And also just to keep in mind that all North Carolina building code and fire code requirements must be met in order for them to obtain building permits for those lots. There was, I think, very minimal discussion, but there was some discussion about the sidewalk and the crosswalk. The developer has proposed a five-foot sidewalk along the western edge of North Williamson Avenue with also a mid-block crossing. That sidewalk is not a requirement of the LDO, but rather the something that the developer is offering to do. I believe it's listed in number, condition number 13. There is existing language. I don't know if the board is comfortable with the existing language under number 13. Would like to see it modified. Civic space, the developer has requested a waiver of the required 2% to 15% civic space. I think I spoke with the landscape architect today, again, Tony, and I think that their hopes is that they might be able to count some of that urban open space in order to meet their civic space requirement. And lastly, street width and on-street parking. This was brought up extensively in the TRC meetings, also at previous meetings here. And as indicated on the plans, there shall be no on-street parking on the narrower streets in the development. And the developer did agree, I believe at the last meeting, to increase the pavement width of the alleys to 16 feet. Again, if that's a condition that the board would like to see, and the developer agrees to, that would need to be reflected. And that's all that I have for an update for you so far as some key topic issues. I know there were several issues discussed at the last meeting, but I kind of went through and kind of highlighted the ones that I felt we should talk about a little bit more in depth. If you have any questions with me at this time, I'll be happy to answer them.
In the LDO current, sorry, do you want to go ahead? In the current LDO, what is the minimum street width?
Let me, I did not bring my LDO up here. Apologize. So four weeks ago, I do not have that section memorized. Specifically, the LDO mentions for this development that specifications shall be based on NC DOT traditional neighborhood guidelines. So there are specific smaller street profiles for T and D developments. Let's see if they actually... Guidelines, I'm seeing...
Have the overlay, what would it be? Maybe that's easier to...
Literally refers you to another manual.
Alleyways be one-way, two-way?
I was going to ask that same question.
Allies are two-way unless they're, they could really be either because they're private. So it could completely be up to the developer whether you want to decide it for one-way traffic or two-way. I will say that 16 width of pavement, you can squeeze wide is typically the width of a compact parking place. Nine is standard, usually standard, 18 standard, so you're going down to 16. So I think it would really be up to the developer if he wanted it to be two-way. Typically because of the design of them being more narrow. Go slower since there are residents that live on those alleys or have driveway set back on. Typically two-way unless the developer decides.
I'd say, working off of the developer's proposal on street widths for standard subdivision as well as for a T and D subdivision. It says that the, this is all the proposal, the minimum. I think the street width typically is 26. That's the asphalt width that gutters. So that's a 30, 31 feet from the outside of curb to outside of curb is our standard size.
Alleyways don't necessarily have to have curb and gutter because it's private property, right?
That is correct. And a lot of alleyways, you typically see it 12 feet is what they start at. And I think that was the developer's original proposal was 12 to 16 feet. And then they decided to go with the wider profile. And I see here kind of just what Rich said. So I'm looking at 50 feet of right-of-way for a street with, it looks like 28 feet from with curb and gutter. Sorry.
Really, the streets themselves don't deviate too far from requirements. The right-of-way on the no-parking street. So there's no parking on that the right-of-way is 52 feet and 27 feet of pavement. The main streets for parking is marked as allowable 65 right-of-way and then 31.
Yes.
Answer my question.
Got a question. Between the civic. Excuse me. Open space. It's that type of thing, I guess, just.
I'm going to guess, actually, you don't define it. Civic spaces is just what it sounds like. Is, let me make sure before I say that it's not defined. Typically not.
Visiting like a building that you would have me.
So we do have a civic building type, which alludes to the definition of civic buildings are used for public purposes, just like what you said. These buildings should be designated appropriately to fit with the neighborhoods as integral parts of the community. Their uses include churches, libraries, post offices, and schools, and that's a civic building. So civic space could have the same premise so far as accommodating the different uses for public purposes. So, but we also do have a requirement for open space, particularly the urban open space.
Would that include like a playground area civic space?
I would count that more toward the urban open space requirement. I don't think there's an exact definition. I think that's why I'm talking with the landscape architect today. They wondered because it is used for public gathering and the adjacent neighborhoods could come in and use the space. You know, an argument could be made that is for public purpose. It's not just for the neighborhood. It's for the community at large.
This is a follow-up. Do those developments like this typically have a civic building?
There certainly are projects that include civic space. I don't know about the scale. Is this considered a small, initial neighborhood development where it can't sustain a new facility like that versus 1,200 or 1,000 lots and put in a substation for the fire department or the police department or something like that? Could be built on that, if you were scaled.
Civic space is different than urban space.
Recreation.
Is that what ours is recreation? On the map, the proposal, image is a plot that's square, called public square. Is that what's considered civic space?
We do define urban open space. It's a planned, improved, accessible part of the neighborhood used by persons living nearby. It should provide focal points for the neighborhood, a central square or green, for example. There should be a hierarchy of open space within the neighborhoods to serve the residents. So it definitely meets the definition of urban open space. And there's more here that it can include, you know, outdoor furniture, picnic shelters, gazebos, trails, walkings. So it meets that definition. And we don't really have a definition of civic space. I think that's why the original project came in with the request for the waiver of the 2%, because we require a minimum of 2%. I have seen in my career, I've seen a small library, satellite office in a larger project where I served. It was a 2,000 lot in a community they developed. They set aside space for elementary school again. So it varies, like Rich said, on the magnitude of the project.
Require 2%? Have a definition of civic.
Calamo. Well.
Yeah, so the word civic is in our LDO 69 times. I've through 40 of them, and there's no definition. There is a section on page 73 that does mention civic uses. But it's more so around what the, what a civic building would be built on and like what the lighting is and such. There is another portion of the LDO where it does mention civic space and parks.
The supplemental regulation tucked in with no reference to it. For civic uses in parentheses, it says, "Police and fire stations, libraries, community centers." All civic uses must have a primary access to a minor thoroughfare or higher-capacity street. And then just, it talks about outdoor lighting and separation. Again, it doesn't really define it. It kind of gives some examples.
Sounds like to me this would be something that in a large community like you, thousands of homes, nothing that's small.
So that's my question would be to developers, like, what is your thought of this civic space? And why are we asking to, or why are you guys asking to?
You would see that public, really big civic space. A small project and, you know, seeing. I've traveled through, I've seen churches and so. This space, you have those mixed-use buildings running this space. See the people that are going there to get a cup of coffee. Across the farm, sit at a bench with that cup of coffee or sandwich or whatever it is. Southern building. Symphony. Gathering for the whole community. So, you know, you see that space for summertime movies. From the restaurant, so it's got parking that surrounds it, so it's a, is a public space. It's the ball of what's around it.
Or two, or third, I guess, or second or third, coming into this. This wasn't one of the conditions that we were, you know, get rid of the civic space. What was the, oh, before? Right, it was the original, but what was the plan of it being used before?
Always had the same plan for that space. I mean, that's basically the highest, driest, flattest portion of the property. So it's going to create the square, but what was the, why now are we asking to?
It was always, so this is, in their original project, it said 0%.
It was raised at the last meeting though about the issue of civic space. And so we wanted to make sure, came back to, to flesh it out a little bit more and resolve, resolve the issue if we can.
Can I add to what Tony was saying? The community square would be set up such that it has an open air pavilion or however, that way people can watch it for parties or whatnot. And we also knew from the get-go, approached it with public art. Wasn't, wasn't something that was demanded out of us. That was our vision. So we're promoting public art there also. Do you envision it being open to the public, if you privately maintain? So, in order to thought initially, we were meeting that goal with the, with the, with the space. And Lori has done a wonderful job. She's, you know, helping us, but keep in mind, we're on our third. All of them did wonderful jobs, but you know, there's been a lot of transition.
I can, standing up, we've made some revisions to some of the provisions, some that you've already spoken of. And so if I could hand these out there, we needed words with them. We wanted to make an attempt to give us some, I think, the work conditions yet and make change to the stub access.
And these are the ones that she has listed up here, is that correct? Just with additional words?
Yeah, just to clarify, the first two, or speak to the access connections or stub streets at Cable Square. And so we're proposing to keep the, the Old Town connection. Still maintaining the barricade and the no-construction traffic, all those things. But then now the Ralston is to make that a pedestrian access only with a utility connection to tighten the water, the water pressure out there. Three is, is the same condition that we had before. Four is the same, five is the same. Seven. About the parking, so that's the condition of the plants that in the family are attached. Lot would have that space in between the garage door and the alleyway sidewalk. Off-street parking.
Might I ask about number five? And so just for everyone's information, it says, "Building three on the master plan at the intersection of University Drive and Chellifer Church Road shall be limited to three stories above grade at the street facing University Drive and Chellifer Church Road. Building three west face shall be limited to four stories." So, um, the, where it's cutting up against to Mrs. Hall's property. And how is the grade different? So is her home above the grade of this, or will it be above the grade of this building or?
I think it's right about the same. When you move towards the intersection, the grade starts to fall down towards that screen. And that's where it allows you the advantage of going under and being hollowed out. So that could be living space or, or even additional parking, park under the building on that side just because it's so easy to access that lower level.
So it won't look as tall from, if you're coming up. Stoplight there at University, you're not going to necessarily see four stories.
Right, from the, from the western direction, you would see the four-story.
I guess that's really considered the front because really the back of the building is up against the roads?
No, we would consider the front facing, we would turn it backs towards the street. Concept is to turn your, your front towards the street, so.
So you're parking, you would park then behind the building, but would you walk around to the front to get? Or would there be a backdoor entrance?
Especially if you come in underneath, there'd be an elevator that comes up. Get to all the levels. And then you'd have sidewalk access to the front.
Ralston, Rob, being a pedestrian. Does that change anything with the speed humps being put in?
So Ralston, there would not be a street connection. What we heard was that the hump was not needed on Old Town, so.
And the fire chief asked that there not be one?
Question about the setbacks between the building, residential buildings. If I remember correctly, those are the ones that back up to Cable Square property. Is that correct? Give them a little more.
Yes. Those larger lots back up the Cable Square and then they are.
So with the, with the utility lines, obviously you can't build up to that. What is the distance between your backlot to Cable Square's backlots?
160 feet.
It's a good hundred and some feet on that.
And will it, will there be any like landscaping buffer or?
Yeah, I believe there will be.
See any up there. I mean, I see the green, but that's just the utility. Yeah.
So anything that's not colored yellow or anything that's green is open space, basically not in residential lots.
So it's not going to be wooded or anything like that? It's open?
Just a couple of questions. And I do appreciate some of the changes that you propose. I think it's going to make this more appealing to neighbors as well as to the town. The one that's, I guess, is kind of outstanding is, it's great to, we're looking at a sidewalk connect down to Williamson. It seems like there's still a little confusion about, you know, what side of the road that should be on or can be on. Because there's got to be right-of-ways that would have to be acquired. So that's a great proposal right there, but it may not happen. Depending on access or what the DOT does. So I guess that's the kind of thing that may not happen for some time. Right, Rich?
Extension from, from where they're proposing it could be problematic, you're right. It would require either, if you stayed on the, on the west side of the road, either... Through the woods to connect to existing sidewalks within Char Center parking lot. Or continuing along the road where you have to deal with a ditch and an elevated parking lot. Supporting, you know, or retaining walls, that kind of thing. Because that sidewalk is elevated across Char Center. When you pass Char Center, there's another section where there is no sidewalk. Along the homes around a canyon. So future extensions of that, of the sidewalk on the westerly side. Would be fairly expensive sidewalks to construct. With some engineering issues to deal with. There's also the question of where it's proposed to stop. And then a mid-block crossing to the, to the university side. I think that's Zach Wilson Drive. Is connecting to, it's a driveway into some, some parking area. The concern that has been expressed to me by DOT, which presumably becomes part of their review. Is that having an additional mid block, they don't like mid-block crossings to begin with. Having another one on that stretch of road. They have some significant concerns about it. There's, I think there's already three in and around Char Center. What? What, what I've talked to the developer about. I have a meeting scheduled with the university later this week to talk about. Whether it, there's the potential for the university providing an easement to put a sidewalk on the easterly side. Outside the right of way, which makes it an easier sidewalk to build rather than to deal with DOT urban sidewalk design standards. And, and. Even if that only comes down as far as Zach Wilson Drive. It's within the town's ability if the. To consider an expense to extend that to the inside of the university drive. Over Williamson at the intersection of university and Williamson. That would be DOT's preference.
Yeah, that would be most logical.
From the project across university, across Williamson, and then come down on the easterly side.
Without getting too far in the weeds, I just, that's something that's gonna have to work out. I, I think the developer understands, he, he doesn't want to spend any more money than he needs to, obviously. This is something that. The DOTs aren't opposed to do anyway, right? They approved that project. Which sidewalk?
Where there is none right now?
Where there isn't one, not.
They haven't approved anything yet.
Well, it was on, it was only.
We submitted that.
When it was approved and it was re-scored, now is it gonna be taken off? I don't know.
Okay, I know it's in our pedestrian plan.
Yeah.
I haven't seen, I didn't notice the detail that said it was on one side or the other.
Here, that was one of the things, she was kind of surprised. A lot of these projects got kicked down.
I mean, they've, they've approved, I don't know if they approve funding for it or not, I'd have to go back and.
I'd like to like revisit that, but I, I mentioned that, but that's kind of a, that's a big expense. Tremendous expense to bring a sidewalk, as we know. Why not use money wisely? Down its purposes as well as the developer.
Can I say so?
Sure.
So. Sidewalk extension. Leaving the intersection by nine hundred feet. Volunteered to do that. Because I've got a understanding with the property owner. Said I can make that commitment. Say I can bring you a sidewalk. The western side. West, western side of Williamson. I have no control over Elon by college. I have no control over what they will allow me to do or not allow me to do. So that's where my comfort level is. I want to be able to control my own destiny. Commitment to you folks that I can deliver on. I don't know what Elon will allow me to do or when they will allow me to do it. I do know that I can do that sidewalk from western side of the road. So that's why, why we got here, how. Just want everybody to understand, it is a significant investment.
Yeah.
And we're volunteering.
And, and I guess my only comment. The, the issues that, that I've raised with that condition. Is that it is a specific condition for specific location. Subject to DOT review. Even if that language were, were vaguer to allow these ongoing discussions. And we can secure the ability of the developer to build on the easterly side. Even if it's just the same distance as that they're proposing to do on the westerly side. From a long range standpoint, I'm trying to think what benefits the town better. In that I think we have an easier way of connecting sidewalks on the east side than on the westerly side, that's all. If we can't work it out on the west, on the easterly side. You know, then maybe the west side would have to be the, be the option. Right now, the, the condition has word it doesn't allow for any options. That, that, I guess that's my only concern. If we could, you know, if, if the developer were willing to look at that language to. Allow for an option on either side, depending on how discussions go. And. Leave that to the, the, the design phase of the actual location. That, that could be a workable solution. My point of view.
And, and I agree, I think it's not an either or. I think we need to look at what's the best solution. In safety, as you mentioned, having an initial crosswalk. In the middle of Williamson is something that I don't think anybody's really want to. Promote. I think it, it, an intersection exists today. It probably makes more sense, so. I, I don't want any condition to be such that, well, it's either on the west side or it's not gonna be done at all. And I think it's what we have to sort of work out.
So is that something that you would like for Lori to work with Jeremy and his team?
Yeah, I mean. I think we'd like to see a sidewalk. But let's do it so it's in the best interest of the whole town, not creating another safety hazard. If we put a crossy midstream in the Char Center. Whereas we know there's, there's a driveway, there's some people pulling in and out. For events, for ballgames. If we're closer to the intersection, I think you remove some of that. Because there is a cross section right there in front of Char, it crosses over the road.
Right, when they have, when they have events, they frequently have somebody there monitoring.
Right.
So it's, it's not just a. Free for all.
So I, one question I do have, one that though, Monty, is, is to you is, so are you saying that? Cause you don't want it to be like an ultimatum, but kind of like you're saying. So.
Obviously, give and take. What they're doing is giving us an opportunity for them to spend money to build something. To help the town. And my point is, is that really gonna help the town? Or is that just gonna suffice because it's easier? From his perspective, cause he knows the landowner and they have an agreement, they would, they would allow him to do that.
Right, but would we turn down a free sidewalk if Elon University isn't willing to play?
I mean, I think that's what we have to talk about, is it, do we want to create another unsafe condition?
I mean, people cross major highways. Williamson is not one of those.
In that section there, you've already got. Two crosswalks, right, crosswalks right there now. Put another one on the other side of that driveway. Those are three right there together. And as we see downtown, how people, they speed through those. So if you've got pedestrian. On both sides, people trying to cross right there, it's, it's problematic.
I mean, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but this is significantly farther down the road than the next one. I mean, if you look, so I'm looking at the map. Right now.
I know the short, if I could, it's also subject to DOT's approval.
Right.
Right.
So it's not even a question of whether we think it's safe, or what we would like. Ultimately, they're gonna make that decision as whether they're gonna allow another one of these, or they don't like to allow them anyway.
Amid, well, how did Elon University get them approved?
EMT for my time, I don't know.
Were they approved? Or were they just painted on the map?
I, I'm assuming they were approved. Because, I mean, the infrastructure would have had to been approved by DOT sidewalk designs. How and why, I can't tell you. All you tell is I've talked to the, the district engineer, they would prefer not to see another one. They would prefer to see the, the crosswalk at Williamson. Or up at University Williamson. I, I guess, and my only point is, I don't know that we need to figure it out where it's gonna go tonight. We may not know until DOT's done with their review and they're not there yet. If, if we, if the condition were such that it had flexibility built into it, so it could go where DOT is gonna allow it to go. Where we have access to, to property to build it, where there's sufficient funding. You know, that. It may end up right where they want it to end. No other options are possible. But there are other options that are better for the community. That don't cost them additional funding. That might be a benefit to be able to be able to do that. The condition as a word today doesn't allow for that, that's all.
So Jeremy, is that something you can work with Lori on to at least discuss? Is there some flexibility? Like, obviously you know that you can do this if NC DOT approves it, but. To put in the condition, what if NC DOT doesn't approve it? What if? Elon University says you can build it on their side? Is there space for flexibility there?
I, I don't know. We'd have to look at it again. I don't know what Elon is gonna require out of me, or is it gonna require me to pay for the easement? How cost prohibitive is that gonna be? Is the town gonna take on the easement procurement? Is there irrigation there? I wanna tear up all the sod, I'm gonna have to resaw it, when am I gonna replace the sod? I mean, it just, it's not as easy as just saying, I'm putting down five hundred feet of sidewalk. There's a lot of, dealing with grades, there will be pipe, it could be storm, former crossings in that location. Am I right with that, Chip? So there's a lot of variables. We took what we thought was the appropriate route, and given our experience and Jeff's historical experience with DOT. We thought we proposed what was the most logical. Now, we will look at it, and I, I don't know, I mean, you're, it's. You've asked me something very ambiguous because there's just too many variables.
Lori, if you and Jeremy and his team can just take a look at that to see what flexibility might be in that particular one, we certainly would love to see a sidewalk, because. I have sidewalks on their side, if they're not gonna connect to downtown, that's something that has continuously been asked of us. So if we can just see what could be in there and. Other questions?
I do appreciate you guys working. With us through this process and listening to residents and listening to the councils and. And we are, we are crafting something together. And it shows that you. By your willingness to, to have these conversations. So I do appreciate it. It does feel weird, you know, you're. Offering not a hundred foot of sidewalk, and they were just gonna be like, nah, you know. So, so I understand where you're sitting with that, but I do appreciate some of these new conditions that you, you put in. It doesn't go unnoticed.
Yeah.
Great.
One thing that I spoke to a resident about, and this is. You know, not really part of the conditional zoning, but it was a question that came up. Is about the windows in the homes that are only six feet apart. Are they gonna be able to look out one bedroom into the other person's bedroom, or will they be offset so that, that doesn't occur? Obviously, you're not the builder, but.
Typically, what happens is they're either offset. Each other, they would be the frosted glass or the old glass. It lets natural light in.
And would the apartment complex be upheld to the same rules as the HOA in the single housing portion?
It would be managed by the, by the same HOA, it would be a sub-association of the master association. So it'd be the same governing entity that we would manage. At least initially, if not long term, and. So they would have, they would have some different regulations, being a sub-association, but they would call under the master.
And I know that you can't say this for sure, but in the typical neighborhood, what would you anticipate? An HOA fee being in this type of neighborhood?
Uh, is, is, it would vary on the product, but typically, most of these communities either have a five hundred dollar, a thousand dollar capital contribution. Initially, and then. Always somewhere between seventy-five and ninety-five dollars a month for the townhomes, the single family would be a little bit different, a little bit cheaper.
Fresh moment, we, you've said it before, just to kind of re, the, the price range, estimated price range, and that's a moving target clearly.
Especially today.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I guess, you know, one of the things we talked about is the affordability of, of. Another option to throw. Mentioned. A range there. And, and I understand, not holding you to anything, because I.
It's not a zoning commitment, if the vision here would be. The townhomes would probably trade in the two eighties, and then the single family would go up all the way into the fives. So, you know, you've got multiple product types, you've got, you know, a twenty-two foot town. Uh, two smaller alley-driven single families, and then you've got the front loaded, so you've got a lot of diversity and mix, a lot of diversity of product. Should complement each other very well. And so you've got those price bands that are more appealing to most, not to everybody, but, you know.
Questions for Lori? Development team?
No, I mean, I like, I like the counter proposals that you presented here. I think we'll be closer to get, like Quinn said, to something that you can live with, obviously. And you can be profitable, but also the citizens who are showing up here tonight can say, well, yeah, that's not gonna take away. From my quality of life or my property value. Let's, let's face it, if you're gonna sell homes for five hundred thousand dollars. That's not gonna drop the property values on their properties, I mean, it's just a given. So I, I think that's a plus. I, I like the fact that we've resolved some of the connectivities. By using the Old Town as opposed to Ralston. I, I think that's gonna benefit both neighborhoods. It gives them an access to University Drive. If they're going to the, to the west, so I think that's something, the many of those residents will use. I appreciate the fact that we've defined with the setbacks off of the garage, being a minimum of eighteen foot. We can go around our town now today and see examples where we allow the town from our ordinances. Ten feet of space with the sidewalk to the garage. And your neighbors, you can see it, can't park a car in the driveway without parking it over the sidewalk. Which defeats the purpose of having sidewalks that make neighborhoods that are connective and friendly, so I appreciate that, so those are things that. Really important.
Well, in addition to getting the, the okay from our fire chief about. You know, have we having the, the recent fire, just the concern with that and, and how that's been addressed and, and making sure everything's to code and. And then getting in and out of there being fine, so. I think y'all have done a really good job in, in working with us, and we appreciate that.
Anything else from you, Quinn?
I mean. Again, appreciate the sidewalk, right? I mean, that's, that's something that we would love to have. I do, uh, hope that you can work with our staff, our staff can work with you guys to try to figure out some language. Where it's not half, where it has to be set on the western side. Cause, you know, I, I, I do think it's smart connectivity that we as a town are looking for, and I think it would benefit the new residents of this development, you know, if it's smart connectivity. So as long as it's not something set in stone, where we can just have some dialogue, figure that out, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you guys, I mean, we've been coming past three weeks now, so. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. I mean, we've been coming past three weeks now, so appreciate it.
Okay. I would like for the board to entertain not taking a vote this evening, just out of respect for our two members who are not here this evening.
The previous.
Or just delay until our next.
Continuation of discussion till the next meeting. Would, did you have a resolution on the question of civic?
I don't think it's well-defined in our LDO, and it needs to be well-defined in our LMO.
It's going to be.
I also think that our LMO needs to address the length of driveways in whatever way that it can. So that it is clear to developers that when they come, that that really needs to be part of the development process because it is an issue. I think. There's some neighborhoods, it even happens in my neighborhood or around my neighborhood where there is a sidewalk that ours are often blocking it. It is against our ordinances. At least I think it is. I know we voted on that at some point. I can't find it in our, but it is something that I do think that we need to make sure that we're enforcing. If we're not gonna enforce it, then it shouldn't be in ordinance. Do you have a motion to continue this discussion to our next meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Is that a second?
Second.
All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all so much. Yes, it is the second Tuesday in August. We will not meet. Moving on to new business, letter A, downtown advisory for appointments. I believe Jill is giving us presentations. Oh, yeah, if you all would like to leave, anybody is welcome to stay, but you're welcome to leave as well. I know a lot of you have been here several meetings in a row, so thank you. You ran them all off.
Madam Mayor, have you been called that yet? Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to present two items. One, this one is adding some people to our downtown advisory board. I'm excited about. As you all know, at this stage of the game, these are town council-appointed positions until we become the five oh one three, then, then we will appoint one from within. But one of the things I wanted to do to attract more board members was formalize it a little bit. So I've come with, up with an application and a job description, because I feel like nobody should really have to apply or something. They have no idea what they're in for, right? So in that process, our downtown advisory board spent some time really thinking about how to balance the board out, how to have some diversity in our board. And so we discussed that at length and different people came forward with application applicant ideas. So when I sent them out, I had two very quick responses from these two, which I was very happy about. So if you've had a chance to review the application, the two positions we have are for Kimberly Holt, who's the owner of Pandora's Pies. And Mackenzie Brown, she's a family property downtown owner. A lot of you know her father, Joel Brown. So when, when they applied for these positions, you know, we, we discussed it at length. We had made recommendations, so we actually have somebody endorse them. And we really discussed that these two would be a great addition to our downtown advisory board. They would serve a three-year term, and then they have up to two terms they can serve or they'd have to cycle off. So it's my request that you approve the two applicants that we submitted from the downtown advisory board.
Are we taking a vote this evening on these items, or are we pushing these to our, our actual meeting?
Do you, so I had a question. Obviously, how many, how many, how many slots are you trying to?
To fill.
Yeah, because you had to submit it.
Right, so we actually, there are seven seats, and we currently have three that are filled. So I think during COVID, things kind of tapered off. I don't know the whole story behind when people cycled off. And then, of course, we had a staff changeover. So we're in the rebuild process. It's partly why I wanted to do, I thought, you know, the job description to kind of help that. Like I said, we, we have four positions open right now. Right now, we have two applicants, and we have a few other in the wings we've been discussing, so.
Well, and I'm, I'm a member of that downtown advisory board, and one of the things we've been missing, missing a little bit since COVID are been owners downtown. And we really need that representation, and both of these folks fit that bill, so that's great. And we're still looking. How are you, what about that? Just post it on the website?
It's been more of a personal. I ask each board member, and they had a little assignment to come up with a name or two of people that I think would be good for the board. I think right now we're looking for kind of just a general overall, and we actually put you on the spot. We talked that you might be a great, great person to find, just kind of your average citizen, maybe a stay-at-home mom. Or somebody that's just maybe isn't involved in, in the town of Elon, but would be a great support to our board. We did want to have some females. We were, had all, all males at this point, and just some, you know, bring some energy and a different vision. And you always need business owners. That's pretty key. But they're just, just members of the community that care about the community.
Is it advertised on our website there that we have?
Yes.
Making seats open.
So I take it you're looking really for stakeholders, people that either who are residents or business owners?
Yes. At minimum, a resident.
Yeah.
Or at least, you know, work in the town, have some sort of connection.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable taking a vote to accept these two nominees tonight. Maybe you'll step, you have objection to doing that, because I think assuming that we can get them approved, if that's what we do, then the better off the committee's gonna be to get, hit the road running.
Like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. We accept the two nominations as submitted for Ms. Brown and Ms. Holt.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. It's much easier to hear the ayes and nays. Right, next on the agenda is the downtown master plan, and you did provide us with a memo of the details. But if you could just give us a brief presentation of that as well.
Right, you have the original agenda item, and I'll start with that and then move on to the attachment that you have got tonight. I'm very excited that we are ready to move forward with a master plan for downtown. A couple of your council members have been on that group. We did have it budgeted in 2021. And we're hearing those, we'll be hearing those funds or allocating those from that budget year into the 2023 budget. There's a lot of changes that happened in downtown since 2014. We had a lot of discussion on that. And actually, a lot of the written items have been completed from that, that master plan. One of the things that we have, a big project that's coming up is redoing this plaza on West College. And we talked about to the different applicants that we really wanted to complement that plaza. And in addition to the social district that's coming up and, and the also the streetscape project. So there's, there's a lot of things happening in downtown that weren't there, you know, ten years ago. In addition, the LMO committee is looking to expand the downtown footprint, so it seems like an apropos time to, to go forth and do a new master plan for our downtown. So we had proposals in the fall, and then there was a staff changeover, so we kind of put that on hold until I got here. And then we go right in, and luckily, we were able to get the whole group together in July, which was no easy task. Thank you for those that came two nights in a row to interview people. And we selected three firms to interview out of five, and they were Land Design Benchmark and Regeneration by Design. If you go to that attachment, the memo that we made tonight, we had selected, and we all kind of agreed and discussed this at length for about thirty minutes, who we wanted to pick. So it was not an easy decision, but we recommended that Benchmark be our choice for our downtown master plan. If you look at your packet, there is actually the contract for services that's included. Seventy-three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. We had thirty-nine thousand in last year's budget that will flow to the fund balance, so we can carry that over in addition to fifty thousand in the current budget, which gave us eighty-nine thousand. Did my math correct? We are recommending that council authorize the town manager to negotiate a contract with Benchmark. And we are further recommending that the council entertain a budget amendment at its next meeting, August ninth, to reappropriate the twenty-three, four fifty from the previous year. And when we were doing these interviews, it, it, we actually asked each of these organizations if they would be willing to consider including the streetscape project with the master plan. Just kind of made sense for us to bring that up and see if they would be interested in that as well. So we are recommending that, that you, they, you consider that as well. And we had a discussion with our attorney today to make sure that there was no issues with us combining that project into two. And there doesn't appear to be any kind of conflict with that, and there's no straight state statute. That's a hard, that's almost like, you know. So we fell by the seat for it, right? So we are requesting that the committee consider adding the streetscape project on to the downtown master plan. And we would bring a contract addendum to you with that, because we don't have all the specifics on that at this time. So two motions have been prepared, and so we're recommending that the mayor and town council approve the recommendations from the review committee to award the downtown master plan project to Benchmark and to authorize the town manager to negotiate the final contract and sign on behalf of the town. And then further to authorize the town manager to negotiate a contract, then for the streetscape design work, and we'll bring that back to you for a future vote. If you turn to the next page, Madam Mayor, you've got two motions there to consider.
If you'll recall, we had planned on budgeting the master plan over two fiscal years.
Right.
Unfortunately, at the end of the pre, last fiscal year, we did not, we were anticipating already having signed the contract, which point that money would have been obligated. We hadn't, so the money has gone into fund balance, which require the budget amendment to take it out of fund balance and apply to this project. Along with the money we appropriated for this project for fiscal year. If you recall, we had advertised the master plan last fall, so it was anticipated at that point that we would be starting. And as we were going through the budget process, we, we made a determination to utilize existing fund balance for some capital projects, including the North Wason Street, Streetscape project. So that kind of got added to the budget during the budget process. And as Jill said, while we were talking about it with the folks, it occurred to us that it made more sense to do them together than to do them separately. Similar feel of the consultants, you don't have two different teams running around downtown, trying to get people to talk about things and having that confusion. So that's where that came from. Our, our purchasing policies allow, actually don't require you to approve those kind of contracts anyway, up to. Up, I think it's up to five hundred thousand dollars. Like, also, which seems absurd to me. I'll always take it to you. State statute, because this is not a, an engineering project or an construction project, state statute is, statute is, is kind of silent on it as well. The second motion does address any potential issues with the Mini Brooks Act, where there may be some engineering work done. It's gonna be a small amount of money. So it would be exempt, and if we're not exempt, it's under the thresholds of Mini Brooks anyway. So that, I just want to explain that second motion to you particularly, because it's, it's word that you haven't seen before in motion.
I mean, I would like to request maybe that Quinn and Mark maybe share a little bit of our, how we reached our, our verdict, so to speak, to Benchmark.
Yeah, so we, like Jill said, we had five firms come, and Jill was great facilitating and keeping this committee on track. And our first meeting was getting all together. We all got the proposals from all the firms and got together and we wrote them one, two, three. And then whatever the top three were, I chose one that nobody else chose. So we didn't get the interview, but we interviewed, from there, we interviewed three. And she also asked that we all, the committee put questions together. So we sent a list of questions, and they compiled a, I guess, a cheat sheet for us during this interview process, where we had roughly ten to twelve questions. And most of the people during the presentations hit on these questions already without us having to ask. But then we just asked them a lot of questions. I think we had a good group of people. You know, Mark and I were on there. So from my experiences, just being downtown, from Mark's experience of being on the board for sixteen years, we had Dr. Jeff Stein on it. And then, of course, our staff members, Lori, Richard, and Jill. So I think we were able to get some good, hard questions out of them. We got to see how they would respond to some of these questions, putting on the spot. And I think we came up with a good choice. I'm happy with them. I felt like some of their language that they used and their excitedness. Because I feel for this master plan, we need to make sure it was, what are we really asking? What do we need from this? What's the most important thing? And I think it's messaging, right? We need to get the stakeholders to buy into and get excited about something coming to our town and having our downtown. Is everybody in Elon's downtown, making sure that it's not the university's downtown. And I think this firm can do that. I think this firm is gonna be able to help us look at grabbing people to get engaged in these public workshops. Because that's what we need, right? We can't just do it ourselves. And that was the most important thing for me, is making sure that these people, whoever we pick. Probably the troops of the neighbors, and I think they, they do it pretty well or can, right? From when I got from, I was excited. I was ready to go put stickers on boards and get excited about what my plan was, or, you know, how to give them thoughts and ideas. So I hope it transitions to the public.
Yeah, I agree. You know, as well said, I mean, we, I think we spent a lot of good time and listened, and, and many of the questions that we had prepared, really, we didn't even go by necessarily. We kind of asked questions based upon their presentation. I, I think one of the big things, and I was involved in the initial master plan, which didn't go too well. In two thousand fourteen, we, we kind of learned a lot of lessons from that, quite frankly, and we've been transparent with some of the things that went wrong with that. I think, well, as Quinn said, I think this, this firm will do a very good job. You know, what we don't want is a sit-on-the-shelf plan. We want something that's gonna be able to be used. And I think the, the project downtown that we've started is, is a great, that, that gathering space is a really good jumping off part, point to let the, this kind of grow from there. Said, I'm really pleased.
I did want to mention that Lori had worked with both Benchmark and Land Design, two of the firms of the three that we picked. And that was very comforting to me, that she'd had very positive experiences with both of those organizations. But once we had our deliberations, like I said, it was about thirty minutes, but we were in a pow-wow here. We are really came to the conclusion that this was our pick, so.
I think it's a good time, right, for us to be doing this, to go with Mark at the plaza. You know, it's for us as a town, we, we ask for private development and to help move it forward. So with us putting our money where our mouth is and investing into our downtown, I think it's a good launching pad for us to get this, these private investors to, to come in and see that this town, where as a town, we're moving into creating a downtown master plan that's gonna be beneficial for all.
Madam Mayor, could I just ask a question?
I think that our town attorney said that we weren't supposed to take questions until after the meeting. Is that correct?
It's not, it's not a public hearing, certainly. So, yeah. I mean, we can certainly answer your questions afterwards.
I want to answer a question. You, are you going to vote on this tonight?
I don't know that we've made that decision yet.
All right. Well, if you decide to, I renew my request for question.
So you have two motions before you, if you're, you're ready to move forward. The voting tonight, completely up to you.
The question I would have is not that I think it's a conflict, but I truly appreciate Mark and Quinn's participation on this. What we vote for tonight is just two people who made the ultimate decision. And myself having to side, me personally, I prefer to have the other council team to participate in this vote. I think we'd probably come to the same conclusion. But I think at the end of the day, I think I would prefer to move to our next meeting.
I think that's, I think that's a fair statement. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. So would you like to make a motion to continue?
I can make a motion to continue that till our next meeting.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our reports, town manager.
Couple items, we've gotten our stormwater audit back from you. They are the ongoing presentation of stormwater plans, whole water implementations, stormwater audits, stormwater plans, new stormwater implementations. They've identified some minor issues with ours, language choices that we had in our, in our plan and other documents that they've asked us to address. And it's time for us to rewrite our stormwater plan. So those, those issues will all be addressed in our upcoming stormwater plan. We will then secure our stormwater certification. Next Friday, August 5th is our next movie on the lawn evening out of Best Schmidt Park. This is the movie of the night, Sing Two. Show starts about 8:30. It has always has free popcorn and free drinks. We've had some issues with audio system in this room over the last couple of meetings. People have not been able to hear us. And has been on the phone with Cam Core, who's done the installation in the past and they were, she got them here last week and they've made some improvements, which which seemed to have really addressed the issue. I think we, we were having a few being able to hear us online.
Oh, it is our system. Because we just.
Two years. And last two items, tomorrow morning, we are swearing in our newest police officer at your all got the notice at nine. And Chief Blackweather will have Officer Ocampo here at our next meeting to introduce him to everybody in case you can't make the swearing in. And we also received a letter resignation day from Lieutenant Mann of the Fire Department. He's been with us 2017 and he's, he is, he'll work within his family's business. So we're sorry to lose him. He's been a great officer, he's an engineer and he's moved his way to lieutenant in those couple of years he's been with us. So.
Get on to the board, Monty.
Yeah, I want to thank citizens who showed up tonight and participated in what we do. And I think it's always important. Actually, the town last Thursday with, and Mayor Sharp hosted our Almess community municipality leaders and it was a good chance to meet. I guess you're getting met in three years, right? So there was a good opportunity for us to meet some folks that we read about maybe in Almess news, but we don't get a chance to see. That was good. And I appreciate the work that Mark and Quinn, I made a comment to Mark earlier about, I think he was on full time staff last week. I saw his vehicle. Nice last night, last week. And I appreciate the time that you and the rest of staff put into, to preparing and to doing the work of the town.
Thank you. Quinn?
So I guess a little update from the art committee. Jill, since coming in, has been diligently working and hearing our cries of wanting to bring art in. So, you know, she was able to secure us, get a sculpture thing from Almess Arts. But we also are moving forward with our Caldwell. So we're going to have a Caldwell painted right beside McGurk's going across Holt. It's going to be a nice mural on the ground. She secured an artist to come do that. And I think we're going to have that before the students come back hopefully. And then the dining area on Lebanon. Looking to put a mural underneath that on the ground. So, you know, we're making our downtown creative, welcoming and bright. And it's something, you know, since being downtown since 2011, it's something I've been really looking forward to. I think a lot of the merchants during the merchant committees have been wanting this. So, you know, that's a nice fun update for, for us to have. If you haven't seen, seen two, it's awesome. It really is an awesome, cute movie. My daughter loves, loves it. So we'll see what we can do about making it out there. And I enjoyed working on this, you know, interview committee. It was a nice process to go through and everyone was prepared and I'm excited for Stephanie and Randy to hear their thoughts from the packet that we got about these people and how they want to move forward with it.
Thank you. Mark?
Just thanks to the staff. I know we always say that, but it's true, particularly lately, there's been a lot on your plate and y'all are newbies too. So thank you very much for all you've done for a question, a lot of questions we've had with subdivision, Jill with all the downtown stuff. So I think we're heading in the right direction here. So thank you all very much.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much. One thing that I didn't mark in my notes and I had forgotten to address was when we did have a lot of people in the room. There were a lot of issues with the ability to hear. If there is somewhere in the budget to accommodate a microphone at our podium, I think that that would be very beneficial. Because I'm sure that not only when you have a room full of people, but you know, if there's other people talking in the audience, even for us to hear a presenter is sometimes difficult. That might also help with, you know, if we're going to continue to live stream everything, you know, the ability for that to be better heard as well.
For you folks or for the podium?
For the podium. I feel like I'm loud enough without the microphone. Are you agreeing with that?
She did that fast, too.
Like, yes. Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
So I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.